Call this meeting to order. Welcome to our Garden City UST 457 Board Education Meeting tonight. And I would ask that you please rise and join me in the presence of the best student from Gertrude Walker Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Would you have the students introduce yourselves and tell us what grades they're in?
Hi, my name is John Garza. I'm the president for student council for Gertrude Walker.
Hi, my name is Eliza, and I'm fourth grade, and I am the secretary of student council.
Hi, my name is Nicole McRae, and I am a class representative and student council member.
Hi, my name is Audrey Swypek. I am a class representative from Gertrude Walker.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ong, and I am a class representative for the Gertrude Walker.
And my name is Kelly Arribas, and I have led this group of students for the past two years, our first student council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you guys for being here. We'd like to take a picture with you, with the board, if you guys stay right there, we'll come out there. Come on here. All right. Let's go.
Okay, you ready?
Big smiles.
One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, if we can get you guys to shake your hand, if you're still over here on this side of the table. Let's get back around here.
Mr. President, we have one more dignitary, since he's here today, we might want to recognize him, and that's the principal at Gertrude Walker has announced his retirement. And so this will probably be his last board meeting he's at, so you might want to shake that hand.
Okay, and my name is Roger Singh, and I'm the associate principal for...
Oh, we got to make sure. One sec. Oh, oh. Let us keep going here.
Yes, sir.
We'll talk in just a minute. We've got to stay on track. We're at Agenda B. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments: Additional certified classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E3, and add item E5F, contract addendum for sale of property at 1401 Buffalo Jones Avenue.
Your second.
Second.
Motion by Mark Sackton, and by Dana to approve the agenda with the two amendments for the discussion. All fair and honest, can you bring them out? Provinced on, motion passes. One more minute, please. Agenda item C, public comment, we do have one public comment, Mr. John Guerrero. Please go forward.
All right, it's drawn. My name is John Guerrero. I drive a school bus, and I've been doing it for the last seven and a half years. I've amassed, I've accumulated over fifty days of sick leave. I've missed very little work, and at one point I was told the school district would buy back my sick days at thirty-four dollars a day. And then they said something to do with capers retirement, because I'm already drawn capers. They said they would not buy them back. And I don't understand what caper, my drawn caper retirement would have to do with the school district USD 457 school policy, or sick leave policy, excuse me. I had agreed to the thirty-four dollars a day, now that they're saying that I am not entitled to it. I don't want, my intention is to retire. I don't want to come back in August, but if I have to come back in August, I was diagnosed with a disease, dizzy, and vertigo. And I went back to the doctors again, and it's still lingering on. I don't want to come back in August, but I'm not going to lose fifty-plus days of sick leave. I feel I'm entitled to that, I earned it, and I feel I'm entitled to... And that thirty-four dollars a day would be roughly eighteen hundred dollars. If I come back in August, my wages alone would be fifty-five hundred dollars, plus the wages of the subdriver, which would be another five, fifty-five to six thousand dollars. I just feel I'm entitled to the buyback on the sick leave. I have earned it, my work record will show that I've earned it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. And I'm, have you visited with the superintendent, Carlin?
I, no, I haven't, but I have visited with KJ Noel.
Okay. I'd probably encourage you to maybe stop by the office sometime this week.
Right now, right now I'm not working, because the stuff is still bothering me. The vertigo is still bothering me. And right now, I've been told by a doctor not to drive a school bus, not to endanger children.
Understand. And most of us don't know the policies as far as retirement and all those benefits. So he'd be the person to probably visit with, and I'd encourage you to stop by his office.
Because I'm the type of person, I'm not going to take a day off just to abuse the sick leave policy. But I've accumulated over fifty days, and I feel I'm entitled to something more.
Okay. We appreciate you coming before the board, and I encourage you to visit with Dr. Carlin when you can.
Do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before the public comment. Okay. Now we're ready for Agenda Item C1, reservations.
Sorry, Mr. Cruz, you forgot about the rules of order.
No problem.
Okay. I am very proud, first of all, I'm Roger Singh, and I'm the principal for the Academy of Arts and Communications, associate principal. And I'm very proud to introduce our foreign exchange students for this year. I am going to let them pronounce their own names, and then I will proceed with attempting a further pronunciation. So we'll start with Sarasich.
My name is Sarasit Munseri, but people call me Anna, that's my nickname.
Can you also tell us who your sponsor is? In what country are you from?
Oh, I'm from Thailand.
Who's your sponsor?
My sponsors, like, uh, Dana Nanika, and for a short period also Jean Clifford.
My name is Vincenzo Cuturi, I'm from Italy, and I'm staying with Guadalupe Nunez.
My name is Chiara Catapano, and I'm from Italy too, and I'm staying with Namane and Julissa Flores.
My name is Shuyong So, I'm from South Korea, and I'm staying with Jonathan and Kristen Whitaker.
My name is Swen Dong Pye, I'm from Thailand too, and I'm from Italy.
My name is Lucas Torres, I'm from Spain, and I'm living with Summer and Matt Miller.
Okay, good. And I'm going to go ahead and read just a short blurb about each student, and what they've gotten out of their experience in Garden City. And I chose to do this, it's going to take a little more time than just saying their names. But I wanted you to hear this, and this is what we featured at our awards night for our seniors, just to feature our students and what they've been through. From Thailand, Sarasich, he's lived with Troy and Dana Nanika, and also Dr. William and Jean Clifford. Some of his favorite memories of his time in Garden City High School are being part of the football team, going to tennis meets, hanging out at Walmart, and being so close to everything in town. Garden City is a much smaller community than Phuket, and Garden City High School is a much more relaxed and casual atmosphere than his high school. When Sarasich returns to Thailand, he will finish high school, then attend university, and pursue a career in business. Vincenzo, who is from Italy, he's lived with Guadalupe Nunez. Some of his favorite memories of his time here are the new friends that he has made, the teachers who have helped him, and attending classes that he never experienced in Italy. Vincenzo found Garden City to be a mix of different cultures. His hometown has four hundred thousand people in it, so it was hard to get used to such a small town. Students in Italy have also got to go to school on Saturdays. When he returns, he will finish his last year of high school and then go to university in Milan. Chiara, who's also from Italy, she has lived with Julissa and Namane Flores and family. Her favorite memory is definitely being able to be a cheerleader. It was a completely new experience, since it's not something they do in Italy, and she loved it. She lives in a much bigger city in Italy, where they take the bus and subway to get around, which is much different than Garden City. The difference in schools is that in Italy, they don't move to different classes every hour, and sports are not part of the school. She plans on graduating from high school in Italy, and then going to university in Milan or Rome. We call him Roy. It's Ju Sung Seo, so I messed that up.
It's Ju Young Seo.
Thank you. See what I mean? Who's from South Korea, he has lived with Kristen and Jonathan, the Whitaker family, Kristen and Jonathan Whitaker. His favorite memories of his time here include his classes and being on the golf team. Being from Seoul, Korea, teens do not drive cars. Garden City High School is bigger than his home high school. He plans to finish high school, and then go to college to major in film. We call her Pim, and I believe, I'm going to just do this for fun. Prach Chua Ma. Close enough, right? From Thailand, she also lives with the Whitaker family. Her favorite memories are about her time here, are her classes and the people she met. Garden City is a small community, personally, she is from Bangkok, Thailand, which is the capital city, but Garden City High School is a very big school with a diverse student body. She plans to finish high school and then go to law school. And finally, Lucas Torres Ruiz, he is from Spain. He has lived with Summer and Matthew Miller. His favorite memories of his time here are prom and the orchestra activities and contests. I want to interject here, Lucas, what is your instrument? I have to do this to you. It's so amazing. What is your instrument that you play?
I play violin.
Okay, and when did you start playing the violin?
When I was three years old.
And I just have to expound that, when he went to play his solo at the regional and the state contest, he closed his eyes, and he played the entire piece from memory. This is a world-class violin solo, he's embarrassed, I'm sorry. But it was just amazing to see, and it was flawless. It was just an amazing experience to see that type of talent with a young person. Garden City is very different from his hometown, as it is very small, and there's very little to do. But Garden City High School is much bigger and easier than his school in Spain. When he returns to Spain, he's going to spend two years in London, and then go to college to study engineering. And that note, these are our foreign exchange students this year. And I'm going to model this for them, I'm going to go by and shake hands, and you all will come follow me. Thanks so much for being here.
Is that tied?
Yeah, the tie. The tie was a little rough to read. Okay, and they're going to do the same thing with the kids, you're going to stand here, and then the board will stand behind you, and they will take your picture.
You guys want to move on forward slightly? We're getting back, bro.
Look at the window, look at the window.
All right, everybody see me? Here we go. One, two, three. Thanks so much.
Okay, and if their sponsors are here, we'd like for them to come up and take a picture with the students also. Are there sponsors? What are your sponsors?
All right, everybody ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys are free to go, have a good evening. Thank you. I appreciate this very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next recognition is JR OTC student from Garden City High School.
Thank you for having me. Unfortunately, both my students couldn't make it due to my personal family matter, and the other one, I guess the choir coach wouldn't let it come. But what they received was a presidential physical fitness citation from Don Trump, and the way they had to earn it is they do five of events, and they have to score eighty-five points in each event. And after seven years of being here, I've only given that award out four times. One student is Eva Condit, she's a freshman in the Green Academy. And the other student is Raw Pitt, he's a sophomore, and they did exceptionally above and beyond. Thank you, I'm sorry that they're not here. We're sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Surgeon. Okay. Agenda C1, C Ronald McDonald House, Pop Tab, Johnson's Little Room.
That's a big trophy. You bought it. It is a nice trophy. I'm Jenna Reed, and the Pop Tab collection for this year, again, over five hundred pounds of tabs were collected. Roger and I took, I think it was seven containers earlier in the school year, and we have six containers at home. Those are big seventy-one quart tubs to take, which is wonderful. Have a big thank you to the building contacts, if you are a building contact, if you'd please stand and tell what building, as well as your name, please.
My name is Tammy Graves, and I'm the library media specialist at Buffalo Jones Elementary School.
I'm Roger Reed, I'm a sixth grade science teacher at Charles Stones.
Competition was again very, very close this year. In fact, I shared with Dr. Carlin and Joanne what the numbers were, and Dr. Carlin said, "Now you checked your numbers several times," and I said, "Yes, I did." We need to keep saving these tabs to help raise funds for Ronald McDonald Houses. Ours do go to Wichita, a few of them do go to Kansas City. The winning school this year is Florence Wilson Elementary. Skylah was supposed to be here, Principal Skylah Wakeham, but something must have come up, so I will see that this is taken to her tomorrow morning. So congratulations to Florence Wilson.
Thank you. Next one is Women of Purpose Award, you pick again.
I get to present tonight on behalf of Jamet Smith, as she had acquired Harvard at Charles Stones tonight. So it's my pleasure and honor to let you know that Sarah Druwinski won a five thousand dollars Women of Purpose grant. She's going to be working with Makerspace to start a robotics program specifically for girls. They plan to have monthly workshops where girls can learn about electronics, design, and robotics, and then you can chime in with even more details.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, it is a program for girls. We've been doing, my husband and I have been doing the program for boys and girls. And it's great, we get a lot of boys, but there's always maybe five girls in there. So thirty boys, five girls, and we'd really like to have an equal mix. We'd love to have teens where it's two boys, two girls, because they both bring different things. The boys always bring that energy, but that girl's bring that, hey, hold on, let's plan a little bit. Let's make sure this is doing what we want it to do. And we need that good mix, and we just haven't had as much of that. So when we get to the camps, it's, do we have a girl group? Do we separate all the girls out? We have one girl in each group, but really, we need that equal part of it. So this is going to be four girls, about ages first, third grade through eighth grade. And we want our older girls in the program, the high school girls, to really start facilitating. And we've already started that. We have a logo, so we'll pass out business cards. And we did not design this, Iliana designed the logo for us. So we're already trying to get the mentor part of this.
We made one for you guys.
Thank you. And gear students for girls in engineering and robotics. So it's a nice acronym. And then we are partnered with the High Plains Makerspace, and this is the first program through the Makerspace. We don't have the facility yet, so they want to have a traveling workshop while we're getting that going. Want to say something about the Makerspace?
Yeah, so we're, the grant is through the Makerspace to, and the gear program is kind of going to be part of that, so the equipment would be for the community. There's been a lot of kids and parents, it's like, man, I wish I could do this, so this is what the Makerspace is for, so people of all ages can come in. And like Sarah was saying, females are traditionally underrepresented in STEM field. And there's that magic age where, like, it's eleven to fifteen, where girls especially are most interested in STEM. And by the age of fifteen, they kind of, due to like different factors, they kind of go away from it. So what we're hoping to do is get them interested through, you know, engineering and making robots, and all that really cool stuff, in having the girls in the high school program, like Iliana, as leaders that could lead workshops, and it would be all led by, you know, Sarah and other teachers, and then the girls that are in the program at the high school. So kind of that leadership structure where they have that role model, that's not, you know, older people like us, but people that are graduating high school and going on to college and doing cool stuff, like Iliana. And then we got Ms. Butcher, who, she's a pretty talented person, like, all around. So I thought, okay, let's bring her in on this, because we wrote the grant, we got it, but the hard part is yet to come. Well, the fun part too, where we actually execute this. So I think this is kind of a good team to get everything started, but...
And we're thinking of our first one being in June. So the first one's going to be makey makey and scratch, and that's block-based coding, and building remotes out of paper, pencil, Play-Doh. You can control everything with Play-Doh.
Some fruit is conducive to, which is fun, bananas.
You can make fruit, yo, you can cut it, apparently, so, yeah. It's pretty fun.
Yes. Well, my girls are two of the five girls. And I just appreciate what you guys do so much. It's always very organized. I don't know if the rumor is true, but I heard the summer camps were full in like two hours. You have to be, I mean, I like literally put it in my calendar, wake up and get my application in, because it is an incredibly popular camp, because it's just so well-run, and the kids have such a great time. So I just really appreciate the time and effort that you guys put in to all the kids at just different grades and everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Took four hours to fill it up, but it was square. We still get emails, it's like, well, we're really interested, and that's like the hardest thing to do, is saying, hey, we're full, but keep an eye out in the future, so. But yeah, we filled it up quick, which is awesome that it has so much attention.
Question? Do you guys want to do a feature yourself?
Yeah, I'm Sarah Druwinski, I work at Charles Stones.
I'm Eric Druwinski, I work at the high school and I teach math and robotics and engineering.
I'm Eliana Valdez, I am pretty much the leader of robotics.
I'm Kelly Butcher, I teach English for train health.
Before the Druwinskis came, you guys involved in robotics. Robotics for kids in Garden City was something that they read about, they might have watched on TV, they might have looked it up on the internet. And today, it's camps in the summer, it's after-school preparation, it's competitions, it's trips to Kentucky, it's all kinds of stuff, and folks, that is due to your leadership, and we're incredibly thankful and proud of you. And just happy to be able to celebrate some of that success, what you're doing is making a huge difference with kids in Garden City, something that wasn't happening before, what we're doing, so thank you so much.
I can speak up now, since it's Texas Kentucky, and I still can't get your name right, so it was Coach, you know? Kentucky. I, first of all, I appreciate for you going with those Jenny Barker kids, because that was an experience to have your input there. And now I'm kind of, have turned into a pest, and I'm asking, how can we get robotics in the junior highs? How can we get it in K through six? And so hopefully, that can be something that we can work towards to get, because it's something that every kid is interested in. That experience, especially with girls. I have an outgoing sister that needs to come visit here, so. And I also, not just the robotics and engineering side of it, but the leadership and the team-building part of it, that experience is an asset that all our kids need to have, so they'll also learn in that, it's something that's amazing. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we shake your hands?
I know like next to nothing about robotics, but it's been fun.
Okay, one more recognition this time, I would like for, we have a new cameraman from the high school. If you interview yourself, can I tell you a bit about you?
My name is Peyton Strahd, I'm a senior at Garden City High School. I plan on going to KSA, Kinesiology major. But over the summer, I plan on moving to California to do something called Drum of People Corps. It's basically like the highest-end professional marching band you can be a part of. And the corps that I'm actually in is kind of like the Alabama of college football. Pretty much whenever we compete, if we're not winning, we're second place. I've been working on conducting, because I'm a part of the leadership there. So I'm hoping this can kind of lead it towards more scholarships, and hoping to bring more like camps and stuff like that, like leadership camps back to Garden City in the future.
Moves to Agenda I, consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items E1 through E5F.
Mark Sackton, let Jean approve the consent agenda. We'll defer to discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Provinced on, motion passed. Discussion items, get item F1, who will work along with the fourth, fifth, and regular training.
Okay, each year we try to update you on the readiness program, so we're just giving you an update this year. And just a little background before we get started, the way this got started really was back in 2013. A common theme throughout our board faculty meetings was that students were not ready to enter school at the kindergarten level, and they didn't, teachers didn't feel like kids were ready at all, unless to go on to the next grade. So one of the things that Dr. A... So one of the things that Dr. Ait at that time asked us to do was put together a committee to try to come up with a solution for kids not being ready to go on to the next grade levels. And a common topic in Kansas at that time was that they were considering retention of all third graders if they did not need mastering. So when we put that first committee together, that committee said, if we're talking about retention, we need to do that way earlier than third grade. So that's where we developed our first, we call it our first grade readiness, but it was really kindergarten students. So that first committee had kindergarten teachers, they had parents, they had principals, and that's kind of where we started. So when we looked at that, we asked three different questions. What do we want students to know and be able to do? What do we consider our essential criteria? What is it they should be able to do before they go on to the next grade level? And then the second question was, how do we know if they learned it? What measures do we need to put in place to make sure that students are being successful, they're meeting mastery of those levels? And then the third question was, what are we willing to do if they don't? Because again, the topic at that time was retaining third graders if they didn't meet the mastery level at third grade. So the committee got together, and they really came up with a lot of different things. Based on the three questions above, they came up with exit criteria. Here is what we believe that all students should master before they leave the kindergarten level. And as we started looking at that, what we were asking on that exit criteria really didn't match the report card. So at that time, we felt like we really needed to design a new report card, because we also implemented a lot of parent resources. And this is where I feel like the whole strength of the readiness program is, it's in the communication with parents. Because we decided at that time that we needed to have a kindergarten roundup, we previously did not have one. And that's where, you know, the students came in, the teachers were actually able to see, assess their readiness levels, where are they now? That we give parents the summer to see what the expectations are, and kind of work with their students before they enter school. And then, you know, at the end, then we designed the report card really to match what the exit criteria was, because we felt like, that if we're going to be talking with parents about the exit criteria, the report card at the end of the year needs to match that, so the parents can see what their students actually were able to accomplish. So we continued that all the way up. We started with kindergarten the first year, the second year we had first grade, the third year we had second grade. We continued that up until fourth grade. And at that point, we took break this year to really take a look at things and to refine what we already had in place before we moved it to fifth and sixth grade. And on each one of those committees, we had a teacher from the grade level that counts next. So on that fourth grade committee, we did have some fifth grade teachers, and they're very excited to, we started at the fifth grade level, but we felt like we needed to back up and really refine what we're doing. So the things that we've really improved so far, at the kindergarten level, which we call in first grade readiness, the board, they, the committee asked the board to approve mandatory retention, so we do have that at the kindergarten level. First grade level, which we call in second grade readiness, we have the exit criteria in place, we have all the parent resources, and we have standards-based report card that matches that exit criteria. And again, at the first grade level, we do have the mandatory retention for those kids in the kindergarten. Now, the second grade level, which we call in third grade readiness, we have exit criteria, but it was decided by the committees at that time that we didn't want to have the mandatory retention, because we're getting to the point where really it's more efficient, works better at the kindergarten and the first grade level. Not that we can't retain the second grade, but we felt like that that needed to be a joint decision between the school, the parents, and the exit criteria is just based to be, it's based on a conversation with everyone too, if everybody agrees with that. So at the third, fourth grade level, we don't have the exit criteria in place, we just have the report cards that are based on those three questions that we ask at the beginning, you know, what do we want students to know and be able to do? What is it that is really important, those standards? If you look at a lot of report cards across the state, it varies widely. You have some districts who identify every single standard that we have, and that's a lot of them. But a lot of districts, they just identify the most important standards, and those are the ones they work towards. And we feel like one of our strengths is that we have that teacher collaboration at the end of the year, because every year we revisit it, we want to know what teachers are feeling, do you still support this, and what changes do we need to make?
What are some pros, and maybe cons too, but pros that you found with the standards-based report card versus the grade level?
That was a big conversation with the parents and the teachers, because what we would expect is that, you know, with the standards-based report card, that we're really looking at those standards. And when you didn't have the standards-based report card, the grade was based on whether or not the student complies in class, because our behavior and our grades were combined, so the academic pieces. It may be because the student brings clinics, they get extra points for stuff like that. So when you look at the standards-based report card, it is just based on academically what the student is able to do. There is a place for behavior, but it's separated from the academics.
I got a question on your teacher collaboration at the end of each year. How do you do that, and is it all third grade teachers meeting?
Third grade teachers, and we've got a committee every year, and we try to bring back the members of that committee. But what we've also found is that a lot of the teachers who were on those committees are no longer there. So we try to make sure that we have somebody from the building, each building, on that committee.
So is it a committee meeting, or is it all third grade teachers?
It's a committee meeting, but we also get input from teachers, because this year we didn't have, we didn't get a lot of teacher input at the committee meetings, so we sent out a survey, because we thought we could get more, we could get more input from teachers if we surveyed in that way. Because I think at the kindergarten meeting, we only had two teachers show up, and we needed to know what they were thinking.
Was there anything in that survey that the teachers filled out that you guys thought that, yeah, we need to change this? Or, I mean, is everything, everyone saying?
Mandatory retention, I think we only had maybe one person that said they weren't really in favor of that, but they, most everybody was. The thing that we probably need to look at the most are the parent resources, they feel like some of those parent resources need to be changed. And I think with what Monica's gonna talk about with kindergarten readiness, I think that that's something that will change in time. Okay, so one thing that we looked at with the retention of students is that it has gone down over time. When you look at where we were in the year 2010 to where we are now, we've seen significant decreases in the numbers of retention. And if you remember last year, I was a little concerned that our numbers were up a little bit, they're down a little bit this year, so... So we always ask the question, what's worked well? And with teachers...